Welcome everyone to the Judiciary Committee hearing this Wednesday morning, an unusual Wednesday addition of the Judiciary Committee. We do have a two-minute time limit for both testifiers on Zoom and in person. And if they, we have a Zoom side crash, we'll try again at, on tomorrow at nine sixteen in this room, oh one six. And, but we will try to fix the problem if there is a Zoom problem. So if you can hang around for a few minutes and see whether it resolves, that would be great. And with regard to the two-minute time limit, often members have questions. So if you can stay around for questions, that would be terrific as well. Okay, first up today is SB fifty-one, Senate Bill fifty-one relating to public financing for candidates for elected offices. This is the comprehensive, the comprehensive system bill. First up on SB fifty-one is Gary Cam for the Campaign Spinning Commission. Good morning.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, Gary Cam on behalf of the Commission. The Commission supports the intent of this bill, but the key is money. The Hawaii Election Campaign Fund has a balance as of the end of last year of little under two point two million dollars, and that is nowhere near enough to pay for a comprehensive public funding program. And the Commission will also ask that the start date of this new program be later than twenty twenty-six. We cannot, we cannot get this going in twenty twenty-six. We were already in the twenty twenty-six election period. And, you know, based on the anticipated use of the, of something like this, we don't have the staff. There, there are various bills this year to increase our staff by two. We would need another election assistance to run this program. As well as, we would probably have to create forms, different forms for this program. As well as make modifications to the electronic filing system and also train candidates. So we asked that the effective day or the start date for this program be pushed back to at least twenty twenty-eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Director Salavaria for Department of Budget and Finance with comments. Glenn Takahashi, Office of the City Clerk, City and County of Honolulu. Also with comments, Jim Kagiwata, Councilmember for Hawaii County Council in support. Jean Lampkin, East Hawaii Republican Party on Zoom perhaps?
They're not available on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, in opposition, Jennifer Navara for H E C A Solid Waste Task Force, also possibly on Zoom.
They're also not available on Zoom.
In support, next is Dave Mullenix for Greenpeace Hawaii on Zoom. Good morning. You're muted, but yeah, but go ahead.
Yes, there's excellent testimony. I'll just keep it brief. Thank you so much, Senator Rhodes, for hearing this legislation and Senator Gabbard. And please pass it. The reason we have Donald Trump in his office is because we don't have public financing. It's pretty much a a game of, you know, people are buying politicians all over the place. It's, it's, it's terrible. Anyway, thank you so much for hearing this. And I do hope you pass it. Have a good day.
Thank you. Next is Evan Weber for Oahu. Possibly on Zoom.
They're also not available on Zoom.
Okay, in support. Okay, we have pages and pages of testifiers on this, but no one else has signed up for in-person or on Zoom with anyone? Yeah, please come on. Good morning.
Aloha Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbard, and members of the committee. My name is Arya Juliet Castillo. I'm the Reclaiming Democracy Program Court Director for Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action. We stand in strong support of SB fifty-one, comprehensive public financing system for Hawaii. This initiative is pivotal in ensuring that our democracy truly reflects the will of the people. Instead of being tainted by the disproportionate influence of wealth, wealthy donors and special interest groups. I want to underscore that we understand this is not a one-shot solution to fix our, all of our campaign finance problems that we have. And I understand with all the pressing issues that Hawaii is facing, the dismantling of the federal government before our eyes, it's very critical eye on how taxpayers' money is going to be allocated this year. The empowerment and integrity of our public, our political system is fundamental for public good. Just as as we invest in our schools, public safety and infrastructure, we should invest in this. The cost of the proposed system equates to less than zero point, sorry, point zero five percent of Hawaii state budget. This is a modest price for restoring public trust in our political system. There are other bills being proposed this year that could help with funding those programs such as SB eleven seventy-three, charging a fee on non-candidate committee expenditures creates another avenue that we can support this critical initiative. By removing financial barriers, a wider array of candidates, including those from underrepresented communities, can run for office. This promotes a more inclusive and representative government. Many of our state and county seats will unopposed every year, allowing incumbents to go remain in office unchallenged and unquestioned, leaving voters feeling more disengaged every year. We cannot continue to complain that low voter turnout is happening unless we fail to give the voters a reason to show up to the polls. SB fifty-one is a forward-thinking approach to campaign finance, positioning Hawaii as a leader in democratic integrity. Thank you for allowing us to testify in your commitment to reclaiming democracy in Hawaii.
Thanks very much. Anyone else wish to testify on SB fifty-one on Zoom or here in person? Okay, seeing none, just the stats were one hundred and twenty-five in support, forty-eight opposed with two comments. Members, any questions? So for Mr. Cam, if you don't want to come back up. I think in the current bill, there's two, I want to say two temporary positions. And you're saying that even if the two temporary were full-time permanent positions, it still wouldn't be enough to run the program?
If they were temporary, it would, it would be enough to get the program going, but I anticipate the other bills we have going are for permanent positions and, you know, aside from setting up the program to run, there's also the, you know, checking of the minimum qualifications. There's also the checking of the spending of the money because the money in this program that is given to candidates would have, would have to be, will not come under eleven thousand three eighty-one. Where you have that eight different ways to spend your money. It would have to be spent directly related to the campaign. So, you know, we're going to have to watch that too. So, you know, definitely we're going to need a permanent, we're going to need the position to be permanent, but yes, the temporary positions will help.
Okay, all right. Thanks. All right. Thank you. Members, other questions? Okay, seeing none, thanks for members. We'll go ahead and move on to the next bill. Next bill is SB one eighteen. This establishes an investigator position in the Campaign Spinning Commission. First up is Mr. Cam for Campaign Spinning.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Gary Cam on behalf of the Campaign Spending Commission. We support this bill, of course. We have not had an increase in staff since nineteen ninety-five. And that year, there, there was an appropriation for an investigator position, but that position sunset the next, the next year. So I'm not sure if anyone was actually hired for that. But we do need an investigator, and this is aside from, you know, the comprehensive public funding program. I've been primarily doing the investigations and where we run into problems is when there's a contested case hearing and suddenly, you know, I'm a witness and it's a when, you know, lawyers shouldn't be a witness in the cases that they're serving as lawyers. It's been hard and I've been ordered to testify. So we need an investigator and one of the duties of the Commission under eleven thousand three fourteen is to conduct investigations and I think it's time that the Commission had an full-time investigator on staff.
Okay, thank you. That's everyone who's signed up to appear in person or on Zoom. Does anyone else like to testify on SB one eighteen? One eighteen, okay, seeing none, the stats were twenty-six in support, zero opposed, zero comments. Members, questions? So, Mr. Cam again, if you don't mind. So, I mean, you've touched on a number of these things, but if, what, what happens? I mean, what, what do you, what's getting missed by not having an investigator now? Or you just don't know because you don't have an investigator?
I, I don't know if anything is being missed. I mean, probably some things are. I mean, if I have a case that is pretty intensive, that's probably what I'd be, as far as investigations, that would probably be what I concentrate on. But you know, as we review reports and cases get referred to me, I mean, things just get, things just get done. It's just like when you approach the end of the process where there is a contested case, that's when things get really difficult. Where you have your attorney doing the investigation.
Is there anybody else in the office that helps you with the investigations?
Yes, the Associate Director helps with the review of bank records.
But that's not really his or her job? It's not really his or her job? I can't remember.
Well, I, I, I suppose it is his job. I mean, he, he's been doing that for years since I've been there. When we step in on bank records, he takes the first look at them. He tells me what he finds.
But an investigator would take, would take that role of doing the bank investigation?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thanks. Other questions, members? If not, we'll move on. Thank you very much, Mr. Cam. Next is SB two fifty-five relating to campaign contributions. This would amend section eleven three sixty-four to provide that an excess contribution of more than a hundred dollars in the cash in the aggregate from a single person during an election period to a candidate and others would be a cheated, should, shall cheat to the state election campaign fund if not returned the contributor within thirty days. First up on two fifty-five is Mr. Cam.
Good morning again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Gary Cam on behalf of the Commission. This is a housekeeping bill. The the camp, the contribution limit for cash contributions is no more than a hundred dollars per person per election period. So what this bill would do would allow the return of any excess cash contributions within thirty days to the contributor. And if that is not done, then the excess contribution would issue to the Hawaii Election Campaign Fund. So the excess cash contributions will be treated like other excess contributions where there's a thirty-day return or issued to the Hawaii Election Campaign Fund.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Addison Blutham, Councilmember of Kauai County in support, Lynn Madison in support, and Brody Lockhart in support. That's everybody who signed up on SB two fifty-five. Would anyone else like to testify on SB two fifty-five? Seeing none, members, questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to SB three forty-five. This is another public financing bill. This is, would strengthen the current partial public financing law that we have in effect. First up on SB three forty-five is Gary Cam for the Campaign Spending Commission. Morning again.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Gary Cam on behalf of the Campaign Spending Commission. This bill, you know, it amends a partial public financing system program to increase the amounts that is the maximum amounts by basically increasing the expenditure limit and increasing the percentage of the expenditure limit. That is the maximum amount that is payable. Again, the Commission supports the intent of this bill and the main thing is the money again. If the, if the monies as stated in the bill are appropriated, then that would be enough to start off running this program. And, you know, we're assuming one qualified candidate per office. As we calculated this bill, this bill actually would provide more funds than SB fifty-one, which is a comprehensive bill that you heard, the first bill that you heard. Again, taking that one qualified candidate for every office, the maximum amount in this bill would be little over twenty million dollars. SB fifty-one would be little over fifteen million dollars. So this bill would provide about five million dollars more than what we, what we've called the comprehensive bill. And this one is still called the partial public financing bill program. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have no one else has signed up to appear in person or Zoom on SB three forty-five. Would anyone else like to testify on SB three forty-five? Seeing none, the stats are thirty in support, forty-nine in opposition and zero comments. Members, questions? So for Mr. Cam, since you're the only one here. So with regard to the this bill compared to the comprehensive bill, but in this bill, you'd still have to raise significant amounts of private money.
Yes.
So the actual dollar amount that would be distributed under the assumptions that you gave would be more. But there would, some of, some of the money that the candidates would be spending would be private money. I mean, assuming expensive.
Well, some of it would be private money, but we're dealing with maximum amounts that are, that are given once they meet the the minimum qualifying contributions. So the amount that you actually give is based on that. So they can raise that and still raise their own money, private money.
Right.
So it wouldn't change the amount that's allowed under the program.
Right, but there's, but part of the, part of the pot that the candidate or the non-candidate committee, I can't remember where that applies to both. The candidate committee anyway would be money that they had raised themselves.
Right, and that's the, that is supposed to be the lure for a partial public financing program because you can still raise the private money. But here, where you're giving them more than what is going to be given in the comprehensive, that kind of like, I mean, why would he even bother raising private funds except for the minimum qualifying contributions? Well, that, I don't run for office. I just, that's what I would.
Yeah, I was really just curious about the difference between whose money was being spent.
Yeah, so the private aspect, the private money aspect of the partial public funding program has not been touched. It's just the amounts under the program.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay. And I did miss someone on the Zoom. Gene Lampkin, are you there?
They're not available on Zoom.
Okay, they were in opposition. Okay, members, any other questions on three forty-five? If not, we'll move on. Next is SB one seventy-six. This slightly increases the it's hard to phrase this correctly. Right now, for a recount, it's point two five percent of the total vote or a hundred votes, whichever is smaller. This one would make it point five percent of the total votes or one hundred, whichever is smaller. So you will get more recounts under this bill. First up on one seventy-six is Scott Nago for the Office of, State Office, State of Hawaii Office of Elections. Good morning.
Good morning. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Scott Nago with the Office of Elections will stand on our written testimony, providing comments and be available to answer any questions.
Good, thank you. Next up is Jean Lampkin for East Hawaii Republican Party on Zoom.
They're still not available on Zoom.
In opposition. That is all the, all the testifiers who signed up to be, appear in person or on Zoom. If anyone else wished to testify on SB one seventy-six, one seventy-six. Seeing none, the stats were four in support, fifty opposed, and two comments. Questions, members? Okay. Mr. Nago, if you don't mind. So you're asking for an amendment that adjusts the timetables somewhat with regard to recounts. Can you just explain what you're asking for?
So the way the law is written in eleven one oh eight, it says we would use the initial tabulation, which would be done at six AM the following day. So that would be either Sunday or Wednesday. Use that to determine recounts. We don't, what we use to determine recounts would be the final election day tabulation, which is done much after that, sometimes in the evening. So sometimes you would have a recount. If we're, if you already use the six o'clock report, there might not be a recount because not all the ballots are counted. So the race might get closer. So that's why we use the final tabulation. And from a procedure point, we don't, we want to finish counting all the ballots before we actually start recounting ballots. You never want to mix uncounted and counted ballots together. That's why we don't start the recall until we're done with the initial counting every ballot for the election day report.
Okay, so so, and so I'm even more confused. So if you, yourself, on the, the current law is that once the initial count is in, as of six AM the next day, you, if, if it's close enough, then you recount those. But then there's these other ballots that are either been challenged or there's some problem with them. And you have to wait, but you, you eventually recount all the ones that are declared valid in addition, correct?
Yeah, so there's two things. There's the ballots that we count on election day, which is the initial the initial count. And then there's ballots that we count after they're cured, which is roughly a week later. We're just saying that we're not going to finish the election day count by six AM the next day because some, it'll take us into the evening.
So what you're saying is you prefer to, you prefer not to do a recount until you know the race is actually close?
Oh, we prefer not to do a recount until we're done with the initial count, which is not at six AM. It's usually six PM the next day.
Okay, so then the, the language in there about the clerks designating which ballots to include in the recount to determine a recount? That, what's the timeline for that then?
So that is just basically saying that the clerks, they receive those ballots prior to the close of the polls, but they haven't validated those. It's just saying that they determined those would be the ballots we would use for, to determine a recall. Once we've done counting them, not counted at six AM.
But that still excludes the ones where there's already been a question about whether they're valid or not.
Yes, well, it excludes the ballots which we call cured, which would be mismatched signatures because voters have approximately a week to cure those. So we, we don't wait to that. Here, we just go off of the initial, initial.
But if it turns out, but if it turns out that those, that those are countable ballots, then those are counted as part of the final tally?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, members, other questions? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on to SB two sixty. It's appropriated its funds for the judiciary for its funding budget. First up on two sixty is Brandon Kimura for the Judiciary.
Good morning. Good morning Chair, Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbard, members of the committee. Brandon Kimura, Director of the Judiciary's Policy and Planning Department. I'm here to testify in strong support of SB two sixty. With me today are Administrative Director of the Courts Rod Miley, Deputy Administrative Director of the Courts Dale and Heather, and other key administrators from across the First Circuit in our administration. In total, the judiciary requests operating funds of six point one seven million in FY twenty-six, six point two five million in FY twenty-seven, seventeen permanent positions, one temporary position. There's an increase of less than three percent of our FY twenty-five operating budget and further request, eleven point nine million for capital improvements. Our operating requests pertain to making permanent or expanding several specialty courts on Oahu, including women's court, truancy court, and the DWI court, driving while impaired. Final cost items for the new Wahihua District Court, an additional district court judge in Kona, cybersecurity tools and personnel, continued resources for the Criminal Justice Research Institute and other important areas for capital improvement projects. The total of eleven point nine million includes a design of a new district court in South Kohala, replacing an AC chiller on Kauai and seven million in lump sum bond funds to address continuing and emergent facility issues statewide. This includes two million more than our budget measure as introduced because we recently received additional cost information related to relocation of our Children's Justice Center. I'm available for questions and thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thanks very much. Next up is Rachel Figaro, Executive Director for Volunteer Legal Services Hawaii.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I'm Rachel Figaro for Volunteer Legal Services Hawaii. I'm testifying in support of Senate Bill two sixty. This bill contains critical funding that would go to funding civil legal services, including but not limited to the delivery of civil legal services to low and moderate income individuals in Hawaii. Volunteer legal assists with up to two hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty line with exceptions for seniors, disabled and veterans. Critical funding for, is critical funding for many areas of law, including licensing statement, landlord tenant, guardianship, administering appellate pro bono program. I want to make clear that volunteer legal does not receive federal funding, so we rely on state funding to majority for our funding. We have asked for one million to be added to the budget, but this is not intended to supplant any judiciary, judiciary priorities and I'm available for any questions.
Good, thank you. Next is Angela Lovett, Deputy Director for Legal Aid Society of Hawaii.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name's Angela Lovett of the Legal Aid Society of Hawaii. I'm the Deputy Director.
Can you just pull the mic closer? Thank you.
How's that?
That's great.
Great. We're here in strong support of Senate Bill two sixty. We strongly support the judiciary's overall budget priorities and appreciate their leadership in expanding access to justice. However, we are requesting an additional one point million, one, I'm sorry, one million supplement to the civil legal services line item to support civil legal services for our low income and vulnerable populations. The justice gap in Hawaii is real. We have organizations striving to provide services and Legal Aid has a hundred and five staff members serving at eleven offices across the state. We, we impacted approximately two, twenty thousand individuals last year. We closed over seven thousand cases. We secured one point seven million dollars in financial benefits back for our clients and we conducted over fifteen hundred outreaches. We, despite our efforts of us and the other organizations providing these services, the testimony provides some information on studies on the, the gap that is there. We would need approximately nine times the number of legal services attorneys in order to meet those needs. And that's why we're requesting the additional funding. Again, want to be clear that this request is not intended to come at the expense of the judiciary's overall proposed budget. And I'm available to provide any other information.
Thanks very much. Next up is Sandy Ma for the Legal Clinic. Good morning.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Sandy Ma for the Legal Clinic. We also are supporting SB two sixty and we also request a one million dollar additional funding for the Civil Legal Services Fund. And you have our written testimony before you. I just want to add that this request, the additional one million for the Civil Legal Services Fund is not intended to supplant the judiciary's budget request. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of this bill, SB two sixty. If there are any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Julie Mitchell, Executive Director, testifying for Kuikahi Mediation Center in support. Monique Barra for Domestic Violence Action Center. Also in support, Mark Morakami, President of Hawaii State Bar Association. Also in support, Joseph Cardoza for Hawaii Access to Justice Commission and support Mihoko Ito. Good morning.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Mihoko Ito. Just on behalf of the legal service providers, I've been working with these organizations for many, many, many years on civil legal services funding. We're so grateful to the legislature for providing a home in the judiciary budget for this pot of funding. And we're here to seek an increase of one million dollars. Primarily because, you know, initially, as we were working on this, that pot of funding was really intended for general statewide legal service providers. It's since gotten expanded, which we don't oppose, the expansion to all, all legal service providers, including the specialized ones that are in particular areas like domestic violence and immigration. But we, we know that this is a very chronically funded area and we'd appreciate any consideration you can provide. Like everyone else mentioned, we are not, we really do not want to supplant the judiciary's priorities here, but if there is consideration that can be given to helping these If there is consideration that can be given, um, to helping these organizations who oftentimes are really the last stop. Um, be, you know, on issues like foreclosure, homelessness, evictions, deportations. Um, it would be much appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Addison Bulisong, Councilmember of Kauai County in support, Patricia Blair in support, Karen Worthington in support. That's everybody who signed up on SB two sixty. Does anyone else wish to testify in SB two sixty? Seeing on members, questions? Um, I think for, um. Uh, Brandon Kimura again. See. We passed out another bill SB three oh four, which increased probation services position counts to eleven for the First Circuit. Um, I believe that you are asking for three in the budget here. Is that correct?
Here we are asking for. Three for Wahihua because we're going to create a Wahihua District Court Unit. Um, we also. Have a number for, uh, whim to make women's court permanent and of the eight there, I believe. At least some of them are social worker positions and I can. Get the, the count of how many of the eight are social worker positions.
Okay, that's because my understanding is that there's a crying need for probation services positions in the First Circuit. Is that, but you, you didn't rise to the level of priority to ask for them?
The, the, you mean to ask for the number that you have in your other measure SB three eighty four?
Higher number anyway, yeah. Um, I mean, I think, I think you guys supported that bill, but.
Yes, we, we support the bill, appreciate it very much. Um, you know. I think the reason we didn't ask for, for more. At the outset as part of our budget is, was we're, you know, crafting a prudent budget, um, you know, and. Determining priorities this, this year, this, um, biennium in the first year, our priorities. Include significantly making the women's court permanent and staffing up Wahihua and making sure that's ready. Um, while our client services and, you know, social workers are additional priorities, we didn't want to, um. Dilute that with additional requests. But appreciate very much the, the bill.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next we have Mihoko Ito unless other members have questions from Sir Kimura. Okay. Now you've already touched on it somewhere. Could you just reiterate to, uh, you know, what, what, what's the, the, the extra million dollars that you're asking for in civil legal services? What effect will that have? Who will be helped?
Sure, I'm happy to, to provide more information. So currently there are four, um, uh. Service providers that are re- receiving purchase of service contracts under the judiciary. The total amount of the line item is one point two million. Um, there are about ten legal service providers total who we anticipate will be coming in to seeking. Um, some access to this funding. Um, so because, you know, it. We're expecting that to happen, um, over the coming years, you know, and, and the money is essentially getting diluted. By the additional providers coming in. That's really why we're seeking the increase.
So who's, who are the ultimate beneficiaries then?
The ultimate beneficiaries is the community, right? When the services get provided, but I can tell you right now that the contracts. From last year, uh, went to Legal Aid, uh, Volunteer Legal Services. Um, uh, Native Hawaiian Legal Corporation and, um, the Legal Clinic.
Okay, so who, for those who aren't in the know, who, who, who is that? Who, who are the clientele?
Um, well, uh, their clientele, right? They provide, uh, services to low income, uh, uh, folks in the community who, you know, um. Have, uh, a, a wide range of issues, immigration, domestic violence, um, you know, access to benefits. Um, helping with providing again, uh, services, legal services and counsel to prevent against evictions and foreclosures. Um, and many other areas, um, you know, to help low income residents in our communities.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Members, other questions? If not, let's go ahead and move on to the next bill, which is SB two seventy nine. This is, uh, reviving the, um, dangerous drugs conforms fentanyl to the possession offenses thresholds for. Methamphetamine, heroin, morphine and cocaine. Um, first on SB two seventy nine is Daniel Hugo from the Department of Prosecuting Attorney, City and County. Morning.
Good morning Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair, uh, Gabbard and members of the Senate Committee on Judiciary. I'm Daniel Hugo, representing the Department of the Prosecuting Attorney for the City and County of Honolulu. Synthetic opioids already account for the vast majority of drug overdose deaths nationwide, and that trend is coming to Hawaii. Um, we are already seeing overdoses from fentanyl. This bill is proposing dealing with amounts that are, uh, either. Direct distribution, where we have evidence of direct distribution or amounts. Where it is highly indicative of, uh, distribution. Takes two milligrams of fentanyl to kill someone. Uh, an ounce of fentanyl, as we point out in our testimony, is twenty eight thousand milligrams. So somebody possessing that amount isn't. Uh, using it for personal use. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up is Jerome Picaral for Homeland Police Department on Zoom perhaps.
They're not available on Zoom chair.
Uh, in support. Next is, uh, Kelgen Walden, Kelton Walden for Hawaii County Office of the Prosecuting Attorney. Also in support. Uh, Councilmember Bulisong from Kauai County in support, Dara Carlin in support. That's everybody who signed up on SB two seventy nine. Would anyone else like to testify in SB two seventy nine? Seeing on members, questions?
Um, yes.
Senator Sanvamantura.
Prosecutor. You know, um. Seems to me that. There are almost always some kind of designer drug that comes around. It's. We have. You know, we have like Schedule one drugs, Schedule two. Wouldn't it be more, um. Forward thinking? To just, instead of each time a new drug comes in, come in and amend, you can just say, oh. Schedule one drugs except for that, you know. I mean, wouldn't that, wouldn't that kind of amendment be better than just every year asked for? Fixing this to add in another designer drug.
So in terms of designer drugs, there is another bill to update the, uh, Schedule one, state Schedule one. So those designer drugs will be, um, added to Schedule one. The reason why we're identifying fentanyl specifically is because fentanyl has already risen to the level of the street drug. Where it's becoming more and more commonly available. Um, the designer drugs are still fairly rare. Um, they're, they're usually used by, um, industrial dealers who are already. Um, dealing widely in fentanyl and have the resources to be able to get these, uh, highly specific drugs. They usually buy them off of. Uh, former patents from pharmaceutical companies.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, any other questions? If not, let's go ahead and move on to the next bill, which will be SB two eighty one relating to torture. Sorry, I said that with way too much enthusiasm. Um, first up on two eighty one is, uh, William Bento for the Office of the Public Defender. Good morning.
Morning Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbard and members of the committee. My name is William Bento. I'm representing the Office of the Public Defender. Um, first of all, I want to say that, you know, we're not, um, we are very sensitive to the concerns of the community as well as. I'm sure members of the legislature in light of a couple of cases that came to light last year. In our community. However, as we've pointed out in our written testimony. We do believe that current statutory language, uh, is more than ample to, um. Prosecute these types of cases and it's unnecessary to have a measure listed in our Hawaii revised statutes as torture. Um, we also believe that section seven oh six of the Hawaii revised statutes dealing with sentencing gives trial judges ample. Um, tools to sentence people, uh, properly in light of a conviction in regards to this type of activity. Uh, specifically, we do believe some of the language in the bill. Is overly broad and can lead to, um. Abuses, uh, in prosecution. Um, we would. Ask that language be tightened up, definitions be clear. Um. And that the prohibitions which hope to be pre, uh, prevented, um. Be much clearer, um, and we've outlined some of those concerns, uh, in the bill. Um. Making the entire, uh, making all of the things that are sought to be prohibited, a class A felony, we feel can be overly harsh. Depending on the circumstances of the case, that calls for twenty years of incarceration. Um, also, it's become a strict liability situation by not having, for the government, not having to prove any sort of harm. And so we do have concerns about that. Um. Let me just say this, um. In the two cases that I think gave rise to.
I'm sorry, your time's expired. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Uh, next up is Daniel Hugo for, um, Department of Prosecuting Attorney, City and County. Morning again.
My good morning Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Daniel Hugo for the Department of Prosecuting Attorney, City and County of Honolulu. Uh, it's not just the two cases that our office is currently prosecuting. This is a nationwide problem and there was a nationwide survey that was done in two thousand twenty. Of state laws. Hawaii received a failing grade. It was one of eighteen states that did not have. Adequate laws to protect children specifically from torture. This is not a strict liability offense. There are states of mind that are defined for all of these offenses. Um, we're not dealing here with people who, um. Made a mistake or an accident. These are people who are knowing or reckless, uh, when they commit these offenses. The two big problems right now are that. Um, there are ways of torturing people without technically causing bodily injury, give electrocution and starvation as two examples. Um, attempted murder also is often not an option because the torturer doesn't want to kill them. They want to keep them alive so they can keep having fun. Um, we will note that. Defenses are still available. So if this is choice of evils, if this is reasonable parental discipline, all of that's already covered and provided in the statute. Um, I will note just on the Big Island prosecutor's testimony, the reason why we have multiple acts is because we believe this should be prosecuted as a continue, continuing offense. We also believe that this should be. Reserved for those cases where the conduct is repeated. We're going to be bringing serious charges. We want it to be for the serious cases, not cases where mistake is a possible defense, not cases where identity is a possible defense. Uh, this is a serious gap in our law. It needs to be filled and we would urge this committee to pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is, um, Vince Lega, Legaspi, Captain, the Colonel Investigation Division for. Homeland Police Department on Zoom maybe?
They're not available on Zoom chair.
Okay, they're in, he's in support. Um, next is Kelton Walden. Hawaii County. Office of the Prosecuting Attorney, also in support. Councilmember Bulisong from Kauai in support and Dara Carlin in support. That's everybody who signed up on SB two eighty one. Is anyone else wish to testify in SB two eighty one on Zoom or here? Seeing on members, questions? Senator Sanvamantura.
Um, public defender. Been a while since I defended anybody and then assault. But, um. What degree is an assault to the first degree?
Uh, with serious bodily injury.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
And that is a class C or class A?
Assault in the first.
Yeah.
Class B.
It's a class B. So like if. Um, no, having done family law, there are these. People who need to, because family. End up meeting each other and end up assaulting each other. So that my concern is. If it rises to a serious bodily injury within two years and two incidents. Thanksgiving goes awry. Poison of, I mean, two Thanksgiving in a row with this then qualified, with this then subject the defendant. To a class C. Assault as well as torture because then it becomes a pattern.
If I understand correctly.
I'm trying to see.
Right, and so I think that that's. Part of our concern is, you know, when you have. When it says you have two or three incidents within a period of time. You're not looking at those individually. Now you're looking at them as a group and there's an assumption that it's a pattern.
Right.
But it could have, you know, what could have provoked those things could have been two separate situations. But compounding it, um, based on the statute and charging a class A felony. That's what we have difficulty with. The, the reason is because we believe that a trial judge. Looking at that situation at sentencing has ample, uh. Opportunity to give a sentence that's reflective of that particular situation. Uh, be it looked at separately or altogether.
Don't we already have an enhancement?
Yes. We already have enhanced sentencing.
So like if, if the instance I'm talking about. Somebody punches somebody and. Again, fight. Hit them in the nose. I remember a long time ago at my. One of my first assault cases, it was charged with a class A because of broken nose, even though that's a common. Enough occurrence in a fight. Um. And. Would. If, if, in fact, the prosecutor does, is able to provide a pattern. Within the enhancement then, the enhancing statute then allow the judge a discretion. To separate and determine whether or not it is a pattern. Versus the prosecutor then being able to automatically charge a class A.
Well, when it comes to that sort of enhanced sentencing, Senator, I think. If there was a prior conviction for assault and now a current conviction for assault, yes, you have a multiple offender there. Uh, but it's two incidents that they're being adjudicated for at the same time, multiple offender. There's also room for. Having the person labeled a dangerous offender, different, different ways in which, so. As we're saying, the, the tools are there already. To deal with dangerous individuals if need be.
For the judge to determine whether or not there is in fact a pattern to provide torture.
Yes.
So, um. Wouldn't it be better to put this instead of creating a whole new class? To put this in as part of an enhancement?
Uh, our office does take the position that, you know, we believe in the model penal code, the way it's written. And by adding things. To assault or attempted murder or things of that nature, um, abuse of a household member on a felony level, i- it's. It's sounder practice than creating a whole nother, uh. Crime, so to speak.
And allows the judge to look at the circumstances of each crime. When, instead of the prosecutor making that.
Yes, we, we do believe that the trial judge has the best opportunity to determine, uh, within the law, the proper sentence. Uh. Taking into consideration the fact that for an enhanced sentence. Jury would have to unanimously feel the person qualifies and may need that sort of sentence. The judge will have the final say. And they're the ones that see the case from beginning to end, and it's their responsibility to read out the proper sentence.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, members? Uh, if not, I have one for Mr. Hugo, if you don't mind, or several actually. So your, your testimony notes that your office conducted research into court decisions and laws that address torture when drafting the bill.
Yes.
Can, can you discuss how your office decided on the specific elements of the bill to include?
Sure. So first of all, what we did is we looked at that fifty state survey, um, to identify the specific.
I'm sorry, which survey, the fifty?
There is a fifty state survey.
Fifty state, I'm sorry, I said fifty six. Okay, I got you.
And so it identifies each of the statutes and we began there by examining that language. Then we looked at Hawaii Supreme Court decisions, um, to see how that language likely would be interpreted. Um, one of the issues, so for example, um, California's, uh, torture statute. And Michigan's torture statute, which are generally seen as models, um, tend to focus on. Either the cruelty of the act or the suffering that the victim felt. Um, we however, have a case state versus Young, uh, where the single torture enhancement that we have in homicide cases. Uh, was deemed not to apply because there was no way to prove, uh, that the dead person actually suffered. Um, they were beaten to death with a hammer. Um, and so. Absent that sort of, um. Evidence and given our case law, what we decided to focus on was, uh, an objective description of the elements. So the, the second step that we took was in looking for those situations that present a heightened degree of danger and those were the. These were the three that we identified. The first are cases where there is restraint. And there's a serious bodily injury. So you can think of it like an aggravated kidnapping circumstance. The reason why that's especially dangerous for victims is because the degree of. The reason why that's especially dangerous for victims is because the degree of injury that the torturer can inflict is oftentimes much more serious. Um, we give the example of burning someone. Um, it's much, you know, the the natural physical reflex will be to move away from the source of heat. But if you've bound that person, um, you can do a lot more damage. So that was one class. The second class, uh, which we looked at and which Senator Sam Buena Ventura asked about, were cases of repeated. Uh, assault that culminates in a felony assault. And the heightened danger in this case and the inadequacy that we have in the law is that the repeat offender statute requires convictions in between. So you can have somebody who is has pending cases, keeps getting released, keeps attacking the victim. And that's also why we kept the look back period short. I, you know, I understand um what the Big Island prosecutors are saying about having a longer look back period. But we're looking specifically at those cases where somebody is engaging in an ongoing course of criminal conduct. And the law can't intervene because there's a trial pending. Um, so that's that's the second case um of heightened danger um where our laws are currently inadequate. I will also note that when we're charging this as a continuing offense, we're having to show a common state of mind as well. So we would have to show that there's a unified course of conduct, common state of mind regarding these assaults. And then the third case that we looked at were uh cases specifically where children were tortured in ways that um evade the bodily injury requirement. Um, and so that's why we specifically listed out some common ways that people um. Will inflict immense suffering on children while at the same time technically not causing bodily injury.
Okay, so then why does your office recommend that the act specified in the bill should be a class A felony? There's no, there's no degrees, right? It's just there's one.
Right, because these are, these are all cases where. If you look at the acts objectively, we're probably looking at an attempted murder except for the fact that we cannot prove intent to kill.
Okay, okay. And how do you respond to the concern raised by the Office of Public Defender, including those that 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 these acts can be charged under existing law? I pretty well answered that one. Let's skip that one. Um, can you discuss the elements required for the acts of, okay, down to the, down to the specifics here? In um paragraph one subsections or yeah, paragraph one C. Can you discuss the elements required for the acts in paragraph one C and the interplay with subsection two that states proof that victim suffered pain is not an element?
Yeah, so California's torture statute does not require uh pain as an element. Uh, to be able to apply on. In these cases, we're looking at instances where bodily injury, which is at minimum causing some sort of pain or impairment. Uh, either. Can't be proven um because in cases like starvation or electrocution, uh, it doesn't cause bodily injury. Or in cases where children have uh difficulty conveying uh that level of pain. Um, which is why we focus on children and vulnerable persons in this specific statute. We're still having to prove injury for sections one A and one B. Um, I will note that there was a a question raised in the Office of the Public Defender's testimony about what it would mean to deprive someone of necessary food. You know, if you look at our animal cruelty statute, it talks about depriving um an animal of necessary sustenance. It's usually a jury question. You would have to present evidence that this was necessary, and you would have to show um that this was deprived. Um, if we can do successful prosecutions for starving a dog in this state, we should be able to do successful prosecutions for starving a child. Um, this is, this is a gap in the law that can be fixed, and we are proposing ways of doing that.
Okay, how did, how did you decide on three, three occasions in a two-year period? Is there some sta- statistical basis for that?
Well, the, we're looking more at a a legal basis, which is how to establish and make it clear that there's legislative intent to make this a continuing offense. Um, one thing that we don't want is for this to be an isolated occasion that's in uh charges torture. Um, I understand the sentiment of the Big Island prosecutors that, you know, electrocuting a child once should should be enough. But what we want to be able to show is that this is not a case of a mistake. This is a deliberate targeted design that is being repeated.
So you felt that three, three was adequate to demonstrate that?
And and the the analogy that we looked at was the child sexual assault statute, um for which the legislature already had a continuing offense.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Members, other questions? Senator San Juan Ventura.
Thank you.
Okay, so. I understand um targeting those who are minor or vulnerable persons, and that would be one section two C. But my concern is the recklessly causes to another person on B and not just minor and vulnerable. You you stated that. It is your intent or the prosecutor's intent in introducing this to show that the pattern or practice. Would be with a common state of mind, but so you wouldn't mind our amending this to say with a common state of mind?
No, um, if our intent is to make it a clear legislative, to to show a clear legislative intent that torture is a continuing offense.
A common state of mind.
With a common state of mind is fine.
Okay, and the reck- see, the recklessly caused, that's. You know, I I grew up nonviolent, so I I don't see it as a problem, but having defended people, there there are certain people who. There are certain people when they, when they interact with another group of people, tend to just, it just becomes a volatile situation. Would you mind the recklessly cause, I mean, instead of another person to be a minor or vulnerable person like you've already stated? Why do we have, why do we allow for a lower standard? For another person, but a higher standard when the act is for a minor or vulnerable person?
So, uh, Senator, I, we were looking at instances where um this sort of conduct presented a higher danger. But in terms of an amendment, we wouldn't object to increasing that to a knowing.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions, members? Okay, so I'm, so I guess that's a question for Senator San Juan Ventura, which which subsection were you talking about?
So B instead of recklessly causes to be knowingly causes. And on page three, line nineteen for pattern or practice, um, to include the phrase with a common state of mind.
I'm sorry, where was the second one?
On page three, line nineteen, at the end of the two years, to put in the phrase with a common state of mind.
So you don't object to any one of those amendments? Proposed amendments?
Uh, no, Senator.
Okay, all right, thank you. Now if I can just remember them. Okay, let's go and move on to the next bill. Um. That would be SB seven ninety-six relating to claims against the state that prohibits claims for refunds, reimbursements, or other payments authorized, which is sought from the legislature that exceed the time limitations. The current statute requires the AG to include in the Attorney General's annual report of claims recommended for approval, a list of possible claims against the state that have not yet been settled. And requires the Attorney General to report to the legislature describing the claims against the state to include additional information. And requires the Attorney General to submit a report every five years to the legislature containing further incidents that occurred to in an agency that led to a claim. Uh, first up on seven ninety-six is uh Skylar Cruz, Deputy Attorney General on Zoom or in person. Here we go. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Deputy Attorney General Skylar Cruz. So SB seven ninety-six seeks to amend Hawaii revised statutes, sections thirty-seven dash seventy-seven and thirty-seven dash seventy-seven point five. Um, section thirty-seven dash seventy-seven relates to claims for legislative relief. As this committee knows, this is the bill that we submit to the legislature each year. Um, seeking appropriations to satisfy claims against the state, its officers, and its employees. Section thirty-seven dash seventy-seven point five is the law that requires the Attorney General to advise clients on how to avoid future claims and submit a confidential report. Uh, to certain members of the legislature each year describing the claims, the advice given to the clients, and what, if anything, the clients did to avoid repetition of similar claims. The the department has concerns about the wording in certain sections of this bill. Uh, the first concern is in regards to the wording that would require the Attorney General to include in the bill submitted each year pursuant to thirty-seven dash seventy-seven. A list of possible claims that the state has not yet settled. The second concern is with respect to the wording that would require the Attorney General to include in the report required under section thirty-seven dash seventy-seven point five. Timelines for departments to implement the Attorney General's recommended actions and to determine whether the department's implementation of the recommended recommended actions was timely. The third concern is in regards to the wording that would require the Attorney General to submit a new report to certain members of the legislature every five years. Stating whether there were any further incidents uh that occurred in an agency that led to a claim after the actions were implemented. And why recommended actions were inadequate to prevent the incident. The reasons for these concerns are stated in our written testimony as well as our recommendations. I'm happy to answer any questions the committee may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, that's everybody who signed up for SB seven ninety-six. Would anyone else like to testify on SB seven ninety-six? Seeing on members' questions? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the next bill. Which is SB eight sixty-one, and this office is relating to expungement authorized at the Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center to transmit all expungement orders to the judiciary to effectuate the purposes. Of Act one fifty-nine session laws of twenty twenty-three. First on SB eight sixty-one is Jennifer Wong, Staff Attorney for the Judiciary. Good morning.
Morning, Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Gavard, members of the committee. My name is Jennifer Wong, and I'm the Staff Attorney for the Criminal Administrative Divisions of the First Circuit Court. Uh, the judiciary stands on our written testimony, uh, providing comments and seek respectful respectfully seeking uh an amendment to the bill. To address the system limitations of our judiciary information management system. I'm available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Uh, next up is Philip Higdon, Administrator for the Attorney General Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center on Zoom, maybe, or in person. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chair Rhodes and committee members. My name is Phil Higdon, Administrator of the Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center. If I may quickly summarize our testimony, uh, the department has submitted written testimony of this bill with recommendations. This bill proposes the purpose is to amend section eight thirty-one dash three point two, the Hawaii revised statute to require the Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center. To transmit all expungement orders to the judiciary, ensuring compliance with Act one fifty-nine session laws of Hawaii twenty twenty-three. Currently, the data center Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center lacks the statutory authority to transmit expungement information to the judiciary. The proposed amendments would grant this of this authority. Additionally, the department recommends incorporating the language noted in our written testimony. Without clarifying that only expungement orders with a case number be transmitted to judiciary. The judiciary will receive all expungement orders resulting in unnecessary research and additional work. I'm willing to answer any question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is William Bento, Public Defender. Good morning again.
Good morning, once again, uh, William Bento from the Public Defender's Office. Uh, we do support this bill. Um, we find that there are numerous people in the community that uh need help with expungements. And once we get those done, uh, this information needs to be removed from the computer system at the judiciary. And then what I'm talking about is the publicly accessible computer system. Uh, we call it Jeff's. I think the judiciary calls it Jim's in the way that they interface with it. Uh, but that would allow um when a person in the public goes onto the system to look up someone's name. Uh, that information will no longer be there because their case has been expunged. And and that's the most important part about it, because getting an expungement is meaningless. If your name and your uh arrest is still listed in that system and people can access it. So we strongly support this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next up is Kat Brady for Community Alliance and Prisons. Uh, in support, next is Georgette Yindal in support and Carrie Anne Sharoda for the ACLU of Hawaii, also in support. That's everybody who signed up on SB eight sixty-one. Does anyone else wish to testify on SB eight sixty-one? Okay, seeing on members' questions? Um, I do have some questions for um both the AG and the Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center, if you, if you could both come up. Let's see. It was a long two, thank you.
I'm just a staff attorney.
Sorry?
I said, I'm just a staff attorney, not an attorney general.
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
My apologies.
Uh, your testimony stated that this bill should be amended to specify transmission. I'm sorry, I don't remember whose was. I don't know who was the AG's officer. Anyway, there was testimony stating that the bill should be amended to specify transmission of every expungement order with a case number. Otherwise, all expulsion orders will be sent to judiciary. What 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 is that about?
Well, if we give, if we submit all the expungement orders to judiciary, that is every uh expungement certificate that doesn't go to the courts. That's an arrest that is never prosecuted, would never get to the judiciary. So with a case number, the case number is been assigned and it's going through the court system, correct? Without, without, there's over nine thousand, I've counted right now that judiciary would get submitted to that some have, there's no court record at all.
Yeah, so some arrests don't result in a court case. There's no court case associated with it.
Okay, so there's no court case, but that also means there's no conviction or it was never prosecuted?
There's no prosecution. We don't have, we don't, we wouldn't even know who that person was.
Okay. Um. And is there a difference between case number and court case number, which is the wording in the, it's in the judiciary request that the judiciary is requesting? Case number and court case number?
We're referring to the court case number.
Okay.
We 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 discussed that. Yeah, there's no, there's, there's no difference.
There's no difference.
Yes.
Um, and then Act one fifty-nine enacted in twenty twenty-three ordered the sealing or removing of certain records within the judiciary's database. For whoman's expulsion order has been entered and transmitted to court. Act one fifty-nine contemplated the expulsion orders being sent to the judiciary. Why, I think you're arguing that you don't have the authority to do that. I mean, they explicitly ordered you to do that.
Right, we had the statutory, it it doesn't allow us. There's three uh expungement uh information can only be shared for certain purposes, and judiciary is not one of them.
But but there's a law that says you're supposed to do it. So how how? That that's what Act one fifty-nine did, right?
But it didn't change our statute as far as the expungement statute.
Well, then we're into statutory construction, but I mean, you should typically, the law, the the more specific law that passed more recently is the one that you're supposed to obey. Right?
Just for clarification, this this actually doesn't go into effect until July first, twenty twenty-five. Um, this provision is to just ensure that they can.
The argument you're making is that you don't have the authority to do it. So.
Right now, yes.
Why do you think that you don't have the authority to do it when you've been explicitly told to do it?
Well, the interpretation that uh I was provided by our attorneys uh stated we didn't have the authority to do that.
Okay. Um. So for for the judiciary, in your testimony, you're requesting an exception to the sealing and removal of records for situations where the person was charged with multiple offenses. And not all are covered by the expulsion order where or where there are multiple defendants. I mean, that sort of defeats the purpose of the whole exercise too, doesn't it? What what's the argument? You're saying it's just too hard to do or?
Uh, well, certainly there are sys- system limitations in in the judiciary uh information management system. We cannot do it electronically at all. Um, we cannot parse out. So the example is a multiple offender. Somebody who is charged with multiple offenses gets found guilty of three of those offenses, but not guilty of two of those. They technically could go get an expulsion order for those arrest records from the Department of the Attorney General for those two offenses. But it only those two offenses. It doesn't apply to the three offenses for which they received a conviction. Um, and we can't take those two offenses out of the case. Uh, and seal that from public view while leaving the remainder of the case with the convictions. and seal that from public view while leaving the remainder of the case with the convictions in public view. Similarly with.
Could be difficult logistically, but I don't see why you wouldn't be able to do that. What's the, what's the holdup? It would mean, I mean, I don't know, I'm not sure what it would mean, but you'd have to go through and regack out those cases from the, from the, from the paper record, but it doesn't, it's not impossible, is it? It might be very.
It's all electronic. There's no paper record. So if you look at our, if you go into the electronic database, E Court Kokoa, there's a bunch of tabs that come on. There's party screen, there's bail screen, there's offense screen. There's also all the events and the dockets. So all of that would have to, we'd have to delete those records in order to remove them from that forward-facing case. We can't delete judiciary records that, I mean, that is just not something.
You'd have to put them back in without the, without the ones that were expunged.
But we couldn't, we, the program, in order for us to not have, say, the party listed, we would have to delete that party. You cannot just, there's no way for us to just mark it out on an electronic system.
Maybe in this electronic system, but that's what I'm saying. I mean, I find it hard to believe that it's impossible in this day and age that we can't pull out stuff like that. I'm, I'm open to arguments that it'd be very expensive, and you know, whether it's worth it or not, but I, to say that it's just impossible?
I could get back to you after referring to our IT people, but my understanding from, from the program standpoint, we cannot do it electronically.
Okay, well, there's a difference between not doing it electronically and not doing it. So how do other jurisdictions handle it? I mean, there's other jurisdictions that have expungement requirements as well, and do they not expunge those kinds of records?
I would, I wouldn't know. I would have to, I would be assuming if I answer that question.
Okay. So, and then a testifier requested that sealing or removal from the judiciary's public accessible databases includes redaction of the case name and removal of the statement that this record is not available for public inspection at this time. Would there be any issues with removing, with taking that language out?
That is already what is, we are prepared to go forward on July first, and the fix for those cases, it, nothing shows up. What shows up now is that, but the fix that is going to go into effect on July first, two thousand and twenty five, nothing will show up.
No, it'll show, okay.
Okay, if I may, can I follow up with the co-defendants? They're in a, in a working group that I'm a member of, the Clean Slate Initiative. That is the issue that is being discussed with the other states judiciary that blame the code, separating the co-defendants, and that is one of the issues that they're having, that they're having at this time. So they're trying to work that out, the IT of other states, of just how they go about doing that.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Other questions, members?
Yes.
Senator Sanbunavatura.
When you said you don't have the authority to expunge certain records, who does? Because Jim's is in the control of the judiciary? Or does somebody else have the control of it? I, I'm, or are you folks finally admitting that you folks do have the control of this website? I mean, I'm looking at it now.
I'm sorry, you're asking?
He testified, and I didn't want to interrupt Chair's flow. Okay, but when he was, when Chair was asking the difference between case number and court case number, I think you mentioned something, you referred to court case numbers. And I could see now in E Court Kokoa, and I remember it as back as, as Wiki at one time. That was a long time ago. You do have court case numbers now, but before you used to refer to like citations sometimes, whenever it's like a traffic ticket or. In the event, because we have decriminalized a number of, like drug perp personnel has been decriminalized, in which case they could offer either a citation or a complaint, I guess. Would you be able to expunge those types of cases? Do you have any problems with removing those, not, if there is an order for expungement? From E Court Kokoa?
So with the judiciary, what the judiciary, what the judiciary does in these instances is we seal cases. We don't expunge cases.
I understand, but then if there is, there is.
An expungement.
Expungement.
Yes.
Would you be able to remove it from the public website?
We will, we can seal the case so long as it's not a multiple offender or a multiple offense case, where only some, but not all of the offenses or individuals are the result of an expungement order.
Would you be able to, because I'm looking at it and I'm playing around with it now, four multiple dependent cases? And one defendant has had that case expunged, or that crime expunged. Would you then be able to remove it from being searchable for that person? So if I, I'm gonna use myself, okay? I had a, a crime that has been then been expunged, but I have been charged along with my neighbor, whose crime was not expunged. Okay, would you at least be able to remove it so that if I put in my names and went into a joy, it won't, it won't pop up?
The only way for us to do that currently is to seal the entire case. So we would seal the entire case, including the co-defendant, and all the, in the case of a multiple offender case, we would seal all of the convictions.
You have right.
Correct.
But if this bill is passed so that we say that you cannot at least prevent it from being searchable, would you then be allowed to then contract out a software fix with an appropriate appropriation so that the intent of the legislator to prevent the searching of the individual whose records have been expunged would then be achieved?
I would have to confirm with our IT department, but I would assume with, I don't know a lot about IT, but I assume that programming can be done with the right amount of money in order to do that, but I would have to confirm.
So when you say, I just want to make sure when you say you cannot, it's based upon the software limitations?
Correct.
Okay, it's not based upon lack of authority?
Correct. Well, we couldn't seal the entire case due to other First Amendment issues if there was a co-defendant case or a multiple offense case with convictions. So it is a software issue that we cannot seal only part of it.
But you can make it non-searchable. You have the authority to make it non-searchable, non-searchable on the website, should a crime be considered expunged?
I guess I'm not, this statute would provide that authority for us to seal that, the thing that we got from the expungement order, whatever was qualified, yes. However, the systems limitations are that we cannot do it.
Okay, so it's a system and not, and not a lack of authority?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, members? Okay, if not unusual for me these days, but I'm gonna have a short recess because I need to console the staff on a particular technical matter. Short recess. Okay, going back in for decision-making. Sorry for the delay. First up is SB fifty one. This is establishing a comprehensive system of public financing for all candidates seeking election to state and county public offices. Our recommendation here is to go ahead and move it forward. I'll recommend, and the recommendation will be to blank the appropriation position counts and note the amounts and numbers of positions in the committee report. Put a bad date on it, April twenty three, nineteen fifty, two thousand and fifty seven, and we'll make the additional staff for this campaign spending commission permanent. We'll delay the start of the program until two thousand and twenty eight, and there'll be technical amendments as well. Let me just be sure I got everything. Yes. Questions or concerns?
Comment?
Yes.
This is a fair bill in regards to elections, but my concern here is that it may be perceived as unfair to certain taxpayers. For instance, if this bill passes, the way I see it, I could go out, pick up a little over six thousand, five dollar donations, end up getting two and a half million from the state to start a campaign to run for governor in two thousand and twenty six. I know I have a lot of followers, but I don't know how many taxpayers would, would want me to spend their money on that. So that's a concern. And real quick, just to add, for all of those who support clean elections, I do. We leveled the playing field in our own race to get re-elected to this seat by taking no money or spending no money. So we can all do it. We should be looking at ways to take money out of campaigns altogether. Thanks.
Okay, other concerns? If not, vice chair.
On SB fifty one, Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments, Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Chair Woodside, Senator Chang is excused, Senator Sanbunavatura.
Aye.
Senator Wong?
No.
Measure passes.
Okay, thank you. Next up is SB one one eight. This establishes an investigator position in the Campaign Spending Commission. Our recommendation here is to blank the position count and appropriation effect the date to April twenty three, two thousand and fifty seven, and note the position count and appropriations in the committee report. Questions or concerns? If not, vice chair.
Chair's recommendation on SB one eighteen is to pass with amendments of the members present. Are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you. Next up is SB two fifty five. This amends section eleven, three sixty four to provide that an excess contribution of more than a hundred dollars in cash in aggregate from a person during an election period to a candidate, candidate committee or non-candidate committee shall eschew to the Hawaii Election Campaign Fund if not returned to contribute within thirty days. And after all that, the House bill is about to cross. And so I'm gonna just defer and wait for the House bill. So that one's deferred because we're waiting for the House bill. Next up is SB three forty five. This raises, this is about public financing as well. This would make the current partial public financing much more viable for candidates. It would allow, increase the amount of, of match that you get from the state and would increase the percentage of the maximum amount that you can spend by a significant percentage too. Questions or concerns on three forty five? If not, vice chair.
Chair's recommendation on SB three forty five is to pass with amendments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I gotta give you some, I apologize. There were some changes. So blank out the appropriation amount, note the amount in the CR, and put the bad date on April twenty three, two thousand and fifty seven, and there are technical texts as well. I apologize.
It's okay.
We'll try again if there are no questions. Okay, go ahead.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB three forty five with amendments of the members present. Any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you. Next up is SB one seventy six. This increases the, makes recounts more likely by making it the lower of point five percent or a hundred votes, whichever is smaller. Right now it's point two five percent and one hundred, whichever is smaller. The recommendation is to pass with an amendment. We'll accept the office of elections amendment, which lets the county clerks include more ballots in an initial recount so that, so that they can, than they can now, but excludes those where there are still questions as to validity. So I think I phrased that correctly, said a reasonable phrasing, okay? And yeah, the net result of the bill will be more recounts and an ability to count more vote, or to include more in the recount. Sorry, it's hard to explain. Include more in the recount so that you don't have recounts where there actually doesn't need to be one. Okay. Questions or concerns? If not, vice chair.
On SB one seventy six, Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments. Any no votes or reservations?
No.
Hearing a no vote for Senator Wong, the measure passes.
Okay, thank you. Next up is SB two sixty. This is the judiciary's budget for the next, this biennium. Our recommendation here is to pass with some amendments. We'll go ahead and put in the extra one million dollars for civil legal services, which will make it a total of two point two million in the bill. And as requested by the judiciary, will increase, the judiciary will increase the CIP lump sum, request by two million for a total of seven million, and the lump sum in eleven point nine million for total CIP. And then to try to get to the issues in that last bill that we heard, we'll add a blank appropriations to determine how to expunge one defendant or one offense in a multi-party or multi-offense charging in cases. And we'll have the judiciary report back to the legislature forty days, at least forty days before the two thousand and twenty six session. Questions or concerns? If not, vice chair.
Chair's recommendation on SB two sixty is to pass with amendments. Are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you. Next up is SB two seventy nine. This conforms Fentanyl to the possession offenses thresholds for methamphetamine, heroin, cocaine. Yeah, considering this sort of unique position that Fentanyl has now taken in the illegal drug world, the recommendation is to pass as is. Questions or concerns? If not, vice chair.
Chair's recommendation on SB two seventy nine, it can ask on amended. Any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you. Next up is SB two eighty one. This is related to torture. Recommendation is to pass, pass with some amendments. Like to delete subsection one, C four regarding depriving a minor or vulnerable person of necessary food, water, or clothing. This provision kind of runs counter to another bill that would not punish parents for being poor. So we'll take it out for now and see how that goes. We'll clarify that the act in sub-paragraph one, C seven regarding forcing mind-altering drugs on a minor or vulnerable person does not apply to current prescriptions for the minor or vulnerable, vulnerable person. And then pursuant to Senator Sanbunavatura's request, we'll take out, we'll change the state of mind from reckless to knowing in, I don't know where it was, one, one B or was it two B? One B, page?
Page two.
Two, okay. And then we'll also change the definition of pattern and practice. And now I've forgotten what you wanted to do.
To add in the phrase with a common state of mind.
With a common state of mind. Questions or concerns? If not, vice chair.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB two eighty one with amendments. Are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you. Next up is SB seven ninety six. This prohibits, does several things regarding claims against the state. Recommendation here is to pass with some amendments. We'll try to address the AG's concerns with the bill on a page two, lines ten to eleven. We'll replace, they'll be replaced with any total, a total dollar value of possible judgments against the state that are not yet settled. Should make it a little more anonymous. And then on, on page three, line fifteen to seventeen, we'll replace that with the attorney general's recommended action to prevent similar types of claims from occurring in the future. And after consulting with the department, and three, and after consulting with the department, the attorney general's recommended timeline to complete the recommended action. Questions or concerns? If not, vice chair.
On SB seven ninety six, are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
All right, finally, that brings us to SB eight sixty one. This authorizes the Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center to transmit all expulsion orders to the judiciary to effectuate the purposes of Act one fifty nine session laws of two thousand and twenty three. As I mentioned already, we are asking for some money in the budget to try to get to the question of how to expunge records when it's a multi-party, multi, multi-offense case. Having said that, the House bill has already passed out of its last committee, so we're going to defer this one and wait for the House bill.
Chair, yes. I don't know if anything can be done, but I didn't submit a no vote in time for SB three forty five. I was wondering if we could go back. If not, it's okay. Again, the next time. There's a fourth item on the agenda.
We'll just have to reconsider. We'll just have to reconsider those again, so. We'll, we'll go back to SB three forty five and reconsider and actually we'll just reconsider it. The recommendation will be to pass with amendments and blank the appropriation mountain, note the mountain CR, put a bad date of four twenty three fifty seven on it and it'll be text as well. And which is the same as my previous recommendation, but we'll revote. Any questions or concerns? If not, vice chair.
On SB three forty five, the recommendation was to pass with amendments. Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Chair Woodside, Senator Chang.
Aye.
Senator Sanbunamintura.
Aye.
Senator Wong.
No, thank you.
Okay, I think that concludes our business here today. Thank you very much.